Okay, Mr. Mayor, it is six o'clock.
Thank you. I call this meeting to order for November 17th. Call the roll.
Mayor Richard Boss. Mayor Nadia Sykes.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Rogen.
Here.
Commissioner Susan Payne.
Here.
Commissioner Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Baldwin.
Present.
City Manager Brian Caesar.
Here.
City Attorney Tricia Bangoche.
Here.
The clerk is present. Mr. Mayor, we have a court.
Thank you, Rachel. If everyone was able to would stand, please, we will have the invocation, which will be given by Kirk Rachel Hughes and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner McDonald. And if you...
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer tonight just thanking you, dear God, for another wonderful day, for another day of life, dear God, and for allowing us to be here. Dear Lord, I just pray for wisdom upon our commission that is here tonight, dear God, that you will just give them insight to what it is that you want them to decide here tonight. And we thank you, dear Lord, because you sent your son, dear God, to be our counselor and to be the prince of peace in this world that we so much need at these times. And we ask for healing on our nation also, dear Lord. And once again, we thank you for being so good to us. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will we want to approve of the agenda? Petria, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I just need to amend the agenda and remove item number eight this evening.
So, I hear a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted by removing item eight.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Baldwin to approve the agenda as adjusted by removal of item eight.
I'll second.
I have a second from Mayor Pro Tem Sykes. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Will you oppose, ma'am? Seven zero. We'll move on to the public comment section of our agenda. Rachel, I believe you have some comments.
Yes, sir. We have two public comments. The first one is from Mr. David Dewey that I'm going to read. So he says, "To the city commissioners of Alamogordo and Otero County, I am requesting the following comments to be and questions on these two pages to be read aloud on the next commission meeting for both the Alamogordo City Commission and the Otero County Commission to be on record. If this is refused, I demand a written explanation as to why this has been done. Attached is a five-page email to the city and county commissioners. I have been called by several people in Alamogordo that nearly every city department, mainly city crews, has had and still are having COVID cases because of loose facial mask wearing and not social distancing. You can see crews at the street standing next to each other within a foot of one another not wearing masks. Grant you, it is outside, but one foot from one another and not wearing a mask, no wonder there are cases popping up all over the place. Why are not all city and county employees wearing masks in their workplaces as required by state mandate at all times? Are certain city and county employees parting on weekends with other people and the virus is circulating because they think the whole virus thing is a hoax, as some city and county employees have been told? Why has there not been no contact tracing of these cases done by the city and county? Why were these cases not reported to the local newspaper and a press release issued to local medias about the concerning number of city and county employee cases? Is this transparency of our city and government and city and county governments? No, it is not. I have been called and told by both Democrat and Republican friends in Alamogordo that both the city and county attorney, even if the state police issue citations to people not wearing masks, that neither would pursue them, instead have them dismissed. This has caused local state police officers to say, "What is the point in issuing any citations if this is going to happen? This is an assault to democracy by two mere men going against the rule of law. Both should resign their positions immediately. In any given day, you can find people walking around at Walmart, Albertson's, Lowe's, and other stores not wearing masks, risking the lives of other customers in the store, store employees and their own lives, even though many think the virus is a hoax or it infringes on their constitutional rights, is wearing one." Then he says, "Bull." Question: Has any commissioner or any commission heard of this same thing? If so, why hasn't anything been done about this? Customers are being exposed to possible COVID. I have learned that after the election, when the mail-in ballots were being posted at the county clerk's office, that the county did not make people wear their masks. She told them they did not have to wear them. There, there were three workers that did. However, because of the close proximity, they were working next to the people not wearing masks. These three workers, although they did not wear masks, came down with COVID. The county clerk needs to be held accountable for this. Is this why the county clerk's office has been closed? Why do county clerk not require everyone to wear a mask that was wearing? Why is this not reported to local newspaper?
Rachel, it's that's three minutes. We're going to stick, we're going to live with three minutes tonight on every, every speaker. You have one more?
I have one more from Mrs. Holly Mata. She is the president of the Otero County Community Health Council. Okay? This one, she says, "Dear city commissioners, there are several upcoming opportunities for community members to participate in online trainings related to the legislative advocacy process in general and to health-related proposed legislation for 2021 session in particular. These are nonpartisan events offered to the New Mexico Public Health Association, December 4th, the League of Women Voters of New Mexico, December 5th, the New Mexico Department of Health, December 10th. All are free and open to anyone. Advanced registration is required. People can find all three trainings by visiting the advocacy event page to share in the New Mexico. And then if anybody needs the link, you guys can either contact me or Ms. Holly Mata at M-A-T-A period holly@gmail.com."
Thank you, Rachel.
Mayor Boss?
Yes, who was that?
That's me, I'm sorry.
The pain?
Yes, real quick, I think that in light of Mr. Dewey's email, and I don't want to harp on it too much, it could be just, there are some real misinformation in there, and I think that we owe it to our citizens to have our city attorney clear it up. First of all, as you can see, she's not a man, she's a woman. So let's make that clear. And, you know, I heard about, if you, if you really listen to what he said about the state police, we know that our city attorney cannot enforce a citation from the state police. So if we could just, if we could take, and I know we've got a full agenda, but if we could just take a minute and let Petria at least clear that up so that people don't think that our city is being reckless, I think it's important.
If I can interrupt you, I don't think that's, we're, we're, tonight, we're gonna, we're gonna keep it kind of...
Okay.
The three-minute mark, and I think Petria can do that in a public service announcement. And I think tomorrow, maybe you could do that and make the public aware of where that is, was erroneous, and we'll move on tonight.
Okay, well, I think it's important that gets done, though, because there was some real misinformation in there, and I don't want people to think that we're being reckless, so.
I do understand, and I think that we should do that.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Payne, those are good comments.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, and that's all of public comment until we get into the individual agenda items. Next, we'll have our city managers report by Mr. Brian Caesar.
I'm playing double duty tonight, having to try and work this stuff for, for Richard, and I'm not quite as good at it as Stephanie is. We do have quite a number of people scheduled to speak tonight, so I'm gonna keep everything real short. Hard as it is to believe, next week is, is Thanksgiving, so I just wanted to wish all the staff, commission, residents of Alamogordo, a happy Thanksgiving. And if you have questions, I'm prepared to answer.
Thank you, Brian. Want to remarks and inquiries by the city commission? Would any commissioner like to make any comment now? Commissioner Payne?
Yeah, just real quick, and I see Dale Lindley's on here tonight with this fitting, because I was gonna mention this, and I want to send condolences to her mother, to his mother, and I want to tell everybody, just mention real quick, for those of you that didn't know Louise Lindley, she passed away pretty suddenly this week, this past week, and we lost, you know, she was certainly larger than life and a community servant, for sure, and so condolences to the Lindley family, and it was a great loss. And so Dale, I'm sorry, sorry about your mom. I actually just talked to her, literally just talked to her maybe two weeks ago about a city matter, and so I was surprised to say the least. So if you didn't know Louise, great lady, and as I said, a real community servant, did a lot for our community. Of course, you probably know more, her husband, Dr. Lindley, but we lost a great lady this week, so I just wanted to, to mention that.
Thank you for doing that, Commissioner Payne.
Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, I'd echo Commissioner Payne's comments, our condolences to the Lindley family, as said here. I enjoyed a lot of the conversations I had with her, which were numerous, but very enjoyable. Secondly, in this most recent shutdown, if you've read the state's health orders, there are some conditions tied to the color-coded, you know, red, yellow, green communities, and for the first time, there seems to be some level heads basically saying, you know, if your, if your county enters a certain level, then you can open back up. I think this is an important time for us as a commission and, and also the commission, the county commission, to start working in conjunction to do whatever we can to help our community open up as soon as we possibly can. So as we move forward, I think we kind of all know that this two weeks is gonna turn into three weeks or four weeks, or that's kind of the gut feeling on it, but I don't think this is any time to, to sit on our hands and not act as a community or as community leaders. I would actually like to see or ask, in fact, I will contact the mayor and see if we can potentially have an emergency meeting, discuss where we are with our public campaign and reference to asking people to social distance, discuss what the governor has handed down as far as enforcement in our community or actually through the entire state. But I would really like to see us work in conjunction with the county to try and get out of this as quickly as we can, because we had discussed this before. One of the things that we had asked the governor in the letter is to be a little bit more regional about the closures, and now that she is, we need to make sure we're doing everything we possibly can about getting our region, our area, open back up as quick as we possibly can. So just wanted to make that comment. And basically, that's it.
Yeah, at the onset of this COVID thing, if you recall, we sent a letter to the governor expressing that because our rate was so low, and at that top point, I think we had two people that had the, two or three people, and at that time, there was no, no special treatment given to those that didn't have a higher rate, so it's a great thing to be able to do that.
There's, you know, we're kind of fighting an uphill battle because the rate of percentage, because we're such a low population down here, 20 or 30 cases, can have a much bigger impact on what our county is in reference to a higher population area, as the way I figure, she, she is figuring, or the administration is figuring it, so anything we can do. Lastly, I had kind of forgot to mention this too, but as we move out of this closure, I haven't talked to Brian about it, not in about probably four weeks, but I'd also like to see us move as a commission to start meeting back in person. We all know we could have done this from the beginning. There are staff concerns, there are, you know, some health concerns, but I think we can get back to some fuller agendas, doing the, the business of the public a little more in-depth without having to worry about doing it over, you know, the internet or, you know, me being kicked out because my power goes out, or, you know, some of the issues we've had with doing the Zoom meetings, but I'd really like to get back to meeting in person as soon as, as possible, within conditions of being as safe as we possibly can.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Any other commissioner have any comments? Not when we move on to the consent agenda. Would any staff member or commissioner like to move, remove any items from the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
I have a motion from
Second.
To accept the consent agenda as stated, and a second from Mr. Baldwin. We'll call the roll.
Jason Baldwin?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Josh Rogen?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye.
Richard Boss?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Move on to new business, item five, consider an act upon case Z 2020-0001A for first publication of ordinance 1620, amending the zoning map to change the zoning of property 2706 Stafford Avenue from MH2, that's Manufactured Housing Park, to MH1, which is Manufactured Housing Subdivision. And I think we have Stella Real, our city planner, here to give us some information on that. Stella?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, City Manager. Yes, tonight I come in front of you with a request to consider an act upon ordinance number 1620. Like you mentioned, an ordinance amending the zoning map to change the zoning of a parcel known as 2706 Stafford Avenue from MH2 Manufactured Housing Park to MH1 Manufactured Housing Subdivision. I'm gonna pull up my slideshow and share it with you all. Can you all see it?
No.
No? Let me see. Sorry, I'm new to this laptop, so I'm trying to figure it out. Let me try it again. Let me... Let me hit this first, and, okay, so that's... How about now?
Oh, yeah.
You should be able to see it.
We see it.
Okay, awesome. Okay, this is, property owner is Mr. Clay Carpenter. So once again, I'm not gonna go through, through his request, just to give you a a side of the location. This here is on Stafford Avenue. It's a little over a two-acre parcel. At the moment, like we mentioned, it is zoned MH2 Manufactured Housing Park. What Mr. Carpenter is wanting to do is he's actually wanting to rezonate, and the reason for his rezoning request is because he is wanting to take, take the parcel and split it into 10 different lots so that he can resell. So in order to do this, he would have to go from Manufactured Housing Park to Manufactured Housing Subdivision. These lots are proposed to be 60 by 150 feet in size. Just to give you some findings of fact, once again, the property is located at 260, 2706 Stafford Avenue with the Manufactured Housing Park District. The application was filed back in October, October 2nd of 2020. The legal notice was published on October 11 of 2020. I did mail out 15 letters by certified return receipt to all property owners of record within 200 feet from the property excluding public right-of-way of the property for which the rezoning is sought. As of November 2nd, 2020, there has been one letter returned undeliverable, and I have only received, received one letter of opposition. That letter of opposition was from property owners that are just more concerned about their scenery being taken away. I did have a conversation with them and explain to them that at this point, Mr. Carpenter could put multiple mobile homes on that parcel. At this time, staff recommends to accept the findings of fact as presented and approve zone case Z 2020-0001A, and I'm open for any questions.
Planning and zoning committee did approve it, right, Stella?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yeah, let me go back to that. They did approve it with a vote of four to zero.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions, Stella?
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Commissioner Aaron. My only question is, he is the owner of 2706, that lot, which is what he's subdividing or requesting the rezoning.
Yes.
Does he, does he own any other property in that area, or is that only his, his only one?
He owns on other streets. I really couldn't tell you off the top of my head exactly where, but not, not in that area.
Okay, not, not the, not the adjacent 1090, it's really hard to read.
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Stella, your letter of opposition, you said it was from one person or multiple people?
No, it was just from a husband and wife, and that was the only letter.
Okay. This is out off of Airport, Airport Road, right? The map, I say the map's kind of hard to read.
Yeah, and I apologize. Yeah, it is, it's a whole different ballgame doing it this way, isn't it?
Yeah, a little bit.
Yeah, I, I apologize, but that's as large as I could get it.
This is that area just past, going down Airport Road, it's like the, the last road on the, on the left as you're going to the airport, right?
It's in the Walker area.
Oh, it's in Walker.
It's in the Walker area.
Airport Avenue, right? Not Airport Road.
Yeah, yes.
I guess anything we can do to develop, develop that area out there's actually plus.
Exactly. Um, there is, maybe you're a little more familiar, yeah, it is Airport Avenue, and then we've got Bird. Are you familiar with Bird Avenue?
That upper other road, is that Lackland?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I know where that's at.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions, comments, Stella? Do I hear a motion regarding this?
So moved.
I have a motion, who, who, I can't see everybody.
Commissioner Wright.
Approve item five. Right here, a second?
Second. A second.
A second from Commissioner Baldwin. I will, please call the roll.
Jason Baldwin?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Josh Rogen?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye.
Richard Boss?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We want item six, consider an act upon case Z 2020-0002A for first publication of ordinance 1621, amending the zoning map to change the zoning of a subdivision property located at 1007 Eddie Drive. And we have our city planner, here's information on that, Stella.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I'm having a little trouble hearing you all, but, so here I come in front of you again. This is with a request to consider an act upon ordinance number 1621, an ordinance amending the zoning map to change the zoning of a portion of a parcel known as 1007 Eddie Drive from M2 Industrial District to C3 Business District. I'm gonna share my slideshow now. Okay. So here we go. Property owner in this case is Kathleen Hodgkinson and Patrick Casem. This, like I mentioned, is located out there on Eddie Drive, 1007 Eddie Drive. You can see my arrow pointing to the parcel there. It's a little over two acres, and at the moment, there is, part of that parcel occupies a metal sheet business. What the property owners are wanting to do is, they're pretty limited on what type of business they can have out there, because it is zoned industrial. So they're wanting to, to go ahead and take a portion of that parcel and rezonate to C3. My recommendation to the property owners is that before they go through the subdividing process, which is not only costly, but it really wouldn't be beneficial unless they knew that we were going to, or that you folks were going to approve the, the rezoning. So what they're wanting is, like I said, to just rezonate a portion of that. So the application was filed on October 5th, 2020. I did take this in front of planning and zoning board. They did recommend approval of this rezoning at the time that, if the decision is made to approve this, at that point in time, the property owners will meet with a surveyor and get the process started. So I sent out 13 letters. I mailed those certified return receipts to all the property owners of record within the 200 feet from the property excluding the public right-of-way. As of November 2nd, 2020, there has been one letter returned, undeliver, undeliverable, excuse me, and I have not had any letters of opposition. So at this time, I am open for questions, and it's my understanding the property owners are also available for questions. So staff recommends to accept the findings of facts as presented and approve zone request case Z 2020-0002A.
Any questions, Stella?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Wright?
Commissioner Baldwin, I just make a motion to approve item six.
Right, a motion. I have a motion from Commissioner Wright to approve, I'm sorry, oh, Commissioner Baldwin, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought it was, I have a motion from Commissioner Baldwin to approve item six.
A second.
Here, a second. I have a second from, Mr. Wright, very good. We'll, please call the roll.
Jason Baldwin?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Josh Rogen?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye.
Richard Boss?
Motion passes seven zero. It's kind of difficult when I can only see three commissioners, and I can't, it's sometimes hard to recognize the voice. I apologize for that.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Stella.
Thank you, Stella.
Thank you for everything. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you, and I'll be back in touch with you, okay? Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Bye bye. Thank you.
We'll move on to item seven, and we do have some public comment on this item. Consider an act upon the land exchange agreement between the Almagordo Public Schools and the city of Almagordo. We have Petria Bingo say our city attorney and Derek Perry, the superintendent of Almagordo Public Schools. I believe we're going to give us some open discussion on that. And I don't know which one of you going to go first?
I'm going to go first, Mr. May, if that's okay, and then I'll turn it over to Superintendent Perry in just a moment. Wanted to walk the commission a little bit through this actual, the legal document that we're here talking about this evening that has been discussed prior. So as most of you know, this is an agreement that would exchange our, what we commonly refer to as Hanglader Park for the property and the fields at Chaparral Middle School. The appraisals did come back. Our land appraised at three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. The schools appraised at three hundred and forty five thousand dollars. The agreement is attached. You will see the final survey shows Chaparral Middle School consists of approximately nineteen point six two two acres. And our property is twenty four point nine five nine acres. The biggest parts of the agreement that I think the commission would be interested in is that the city did, I'm sorry, the schools did agree in writing that the schools will be responsible for the cost to extend city water and sewer lines to the boundary of the parcel. The schools further agreed that as part of that it is their responsibility to demolish the middle school and remove all debris from the the site. And they've given us an allotment of two hundred thousand dollars to extend over that. Oh, gosh, the word escapes me. To extend over the field, the irrigation system, I'm sorry, to extend over the irrigation system to take care of what would become the new sports fields. Additionally, the school agreed that they would be responsible for a cost of the traffic signal at fairgrounds and put on if a traffic study reveals the need for one. And again, the city knows that if, well, we we already have the study that shows we need a delight at fairgrounds in Florida, so that would be our responsibility. I know that last time we spoke, those were the major concerns. They are in writing in the agreement that looks like this, that was attached to the agenda that you all should have received. And then Sir Perry has a PowerPoint that I loaded on my computer just for ease of presentation that I will share with all of you if you give me just a second. Also, my first time sharing my screen. Can everyone see what I'm doing?
Yes.
Perfect. All you are Superintendent Perry.
Great. Thank you, Petria. I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I hope everyone is persevering during this exceptionally difficult time. It's important to recognize that as others stagnate, municipalities stagnate, districts stagnate and stammer due to the challenges that we're all having to to deal with in today's world. Think it's more important than ever for us to collectively unite and keep pushing forward forward as a community. So I certainly appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight. The city and the schools are one of the same, so our our strong partnership is imperative, especially during these difficult times. All indicators suggest that the next chapter in Almagordo is going to be reminiscent of Rocket City of the nineteen fifties, and I I know that's very difficult to comprehend right now because we're in a state of crisis. But just a little bit of reflection of our history. In the nineteen fifties, Almagordo was was booming because of the Rocket City era. I know as as commissioners, you're you're very well aware of the history. But there were challenges too. We were in the midst of a Cold War. But yet the community of Almagordo kept pushing forward, and and that was during the time where we built almost every school that you see in every neighborhood in Almagordo, and I I have, as an optimist, I have to continue down that line of of thinking that we're we're going forward and we have to continue to progress, and the the second that we stop progressing is the time that we stop growing, and when you stop growing, you die. So it's just important to recognize that we truly are in this together. The city of Almagordo and Almagordo Public Schools in particular. Tonight, an entire community and generation is anxiously watching the decision tonight. A yes vote tonight will propel our entire community to places it hasn't seen in decades. This is a shovel ready project, a forty million dollar project that will directly impact our local economy. If if approved, we will immediately begin the RFP process and contract an architect for design. We're ready to go. So accelerating that progress is going to be the key to our our future as a community. A no vote tonight to either table it or to deny the toward to deny the agreement stops our project dead in its tracks. And the countless hours that the city and school officials have committed with the purpose of pushing Almagordo forward could potentially be jeopardized. The honest truth, I've I've had lots of conversations with with leadership throughout the community, and and here's just a reality, a hard fact, is we don't have time to wait and see anymore. We've run out of time to think about how we can make the quality of life better in Almagordo. The time truly is right now, and a yes vote brings immediate change that benefits everyone in Almagordo. We have to accelerate progress if we want to compete at the national and world market. It's just the it's just the reality. This is where we're at. Building this school at this site propels us to a whole different level. We're confident that building CMS at Hanglader Park is the most responsible and feasible decision for both the city of Almagordo and APS. We're also confident that building a school at this site is prudent as many, many schools throughout the country and the state are in the vicinity of healthcare facilities, fairgrounds, community colleges, and major thoroughfares. It's the way that our country has evolved as a community. So it's not, it's certainly not unusual to build schools where growth is occurring. So with that, with that said, I'm going to move over here to to the to the slide. If you can see, can you go back to the the very first slide, Petria?
Oops, maybe.
Yeah, just go back one more right there. So so you're probably asking the question, why is, why are we showing Holman Elementary School? Well, I think it's just proof, proof that we as a school district are on top of progress. This particular school is funded. We've completed the ed tech. We've completed the design. This is the final design. And tomorrow night at the school board meeting, we will be giving the contract out to the contractor. So this is real. This is really happening. This is a thirty plus million dollar project, and it's right here in our community. So the reality is, is what what do we want our community to look like in the future? Let's go to the next, the next slide, Petria. Thank you. So if we're able to to meet, to reach the agreement tonight, these are some of the the possibilities that Chaparral could look like. This is just the beginning steps, and I think it's important that we recognize as a community that we can do anything as long as we do it together. And as soon as we get our architect and put our 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 team together, we would certainly hope that there is a representative from the city of Almagordo to be a part of this team to help us facilitate the design. So we're excited about the potential. You saw Holman Elementary School. Our goal is to make that even bigger and better every time. And so we have a lot of projects, but we're very excited about the potential of Chaparral. Okay, Petria, next slide, please. So the the rationale and benefits of a land exchange, so building a new middle school for the Almagordo community is a once in a generation opportunity. We we everybody on this Zoom call, we probably won't have another opportunity to 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 have, to build an elementary school at this, a middle school at this magnitude. So it's it's important. It's important for our kids. It's important for our community. It's important for us to to do it together. But this school, Chaparral Middle School, as you know, it's a sixty year old school. And just just a reality, and I know a lot of people on this call recognize this. But Chaparral Middle School is dilapidated. It's falling down. It is becoming unsafe, and we have to move quickly. It it is. It is where it has reached the maximum life expectancy, and it's time to rebuild. And we just, we can't kick the can down the road anymore, and we have to do it quickly. And right now. So locating our new school in the in the right place is critically important. Currently, Chaparral Middle School and Mountain View Middle School are about one point three miles apart. So what we're dealing with is some zoning issues that we need to correct. And so building the school on the north side of town is is the most conducive for our school district and our community. And it also, we're we're building a school where there is proven growth. So next slide, please, Petria. So we're excited, just the fact that, you know, over the last six or seven years, working directly with the city and and recognizing that that our kids are your kids. We share facilities, and we we all know that there there has been a lack of facilities in Almagordo, having to to put all of our kids on one particular field or or perhaps having water issues or safety issues because of whatever the case may be. So so adding new facilities is to the benefit of all of our kids in Almagordo. It is good for Almagordo Public Schools. It's good for the city of Almagordo. And so it's it's important to recognize that the Almagordo will extend that grass and the irrigation, the affluent water line, we will do that. And and we will take Chaparral down to a point where we can actually build those facilities and do it conducively. This is good for that neighborhood. Again, it's good for the city of Almagordo and and APS. So the the new Chaparral will also have a new sports field that will ease the scheduling and congestion. We talked about that. And so we have multiple places throughout the community, whether it be in the Almagordo Public School District or Almagordo. So we're we're excited about the potential of increasing that capacity. And it certainly adds on to the quality of life that we're all aiming for on this call. Definitely increases that. The existing Chaparral site also provides an idea of park space between walking distance for hundreds of Almagordo residents. So so this is, this is a good thing. We did send out a survey to parents regarding what is most important to them in selecting a new site for Chaparral Middle School. Of the ten categories included in the survey, the two most important on the survey were site connection to community services such as recreation facilities, parks, sports fields, and things like that, but also the site ability to operate as a demonstration school with NMSUA. We all know that the partnership that NMSUA has with the Almagordo Public Schools is absolutely vital, and so we want to continue to expand that partnership. Hanglader Park location is the ideal location to support both of these priorities. Okay, next slide, please, Petria. The Almagordo Public Schools is a good partner. We've worked really hard over the last twenty four to thirty months. I get caught in the COVID haze sometimes. And and the reality is, is that we we have a strong partnership with the city of Almagordo. And I I see that strengthening every day, and we need to continue to do that. But the economic and the quality of life impact of having a modern, state of the art school building in the community, in our community, is incalculable. Families are the lifeblood of quality of our community and increasing the quality of life. So so that that's that's the gist of this whole thing of being a good partner. Through local geo bond revenue and state of New Mexico matching funds, the Almagordo Public Schools has led the way in investing more than a hundred million dollars into our community through the construction of new schools and other major renovation projects. So we're certainly doing our part, and we have big plans in the future. But so some of the things that APS has done recently is we've renovated the pre K facilities. If you haven't stopped by recently, you should as soon as COVID subsides and come look at our new pre K facility. North Elementary School was remodeled in the in the last several years. Yucca Elementary School was a remodel. Desert Star is fairly new. We have security upgrades throughout the district that we've tapped into a special funding, SB nine funding, geo funding, and so on. We've built Sunset Hills, and we've really put a lot of money into the Almagordo High School renovations, all the way from security to perimeter fencing and so on and so forth. So we're proud of our completed projects and in process, as I said earlier, is a new Holman Elementary School that is, we are, we are, we will be breaking ground around the first of January. That is a real project, and now Chaparral. So and then, of course, next on our list, if you go according to the PSA, PSFA ranking system, Sierra Elementary School would be next on the list, and then Almagordo High School. So we have a lot of projects, and again, goes back to my original statement, that you can see how Almagordo is transitioning back into the type of growth that we saw during the Rocket City era, and we have one chance to do it, and we need to do it right. So why must it be this site? The new Chaparral Middle School will be nearly a forty million dollar facility. Many factors have been considered in choosing Hanglader Park as the optimal location for the new middle school. This site is ideally located to accomplish every district objective. There is a fixed amount of money available for the school building project. Every dollar that is spent on site acquisition for land to build on must be taken away from building features such as technology, sustainability, and building system details. This land exchange allows the school district to maximize our available funds and spend the money where it matters. Toward a facility that provides twenty first century learning opportunities and prepares our children for the careers of tomorrow. While other entities may have ample funds available to outright purchase the property that best suits their needs, the Almagordo Public Schools simply does not. Without this land exchange partnership with the city of Almagordo, the overall quality of the new facility and the elements of the learning environment will provide for our children could be potentially be impacted. Next slide, please, Petria. So so again, I'm just going to go back to my original statement. This is a once in a lifetime opportunity. We don't have time to wait anymore. We have a perfect opportunity to push this community forward. And a yes vote will accelerate that process, and it will be beneficial to everyone involved. I know that there's lots of questions. I know there's a lot of people that want to talk tonight, so Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I stand for any questions.
Any questions of any of the commissioners? I'm going to make a brief comment. My family and I moved here in nineteen fifty five, and I attended Oregon School until the middle of the sixth grade, at which time they bought a house up on Bellama, on Hendrix, I'm sorry. So I went to high school the the rest of the sixth grade, and then I waited the, at that time, there was no Chaparral. And they, what the school district had done is they broke up morning sessions. The people on one part of town went and afternoon sessions, the other part of town went. I was one of the first people to go to Chaparral. It's got some little little sentimental to it, but when you think about it, I've Oregon School no longer, we fortunately, we still have that, and the city's going to make use of it. High School is gone, and now Chaparral is going to be gone. That makes me really, really feel old. I guess I am anyway. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I got one. I guess for for Mr. Perry, did you guys do any geotechnical investigation on that piece of property over there? I have had numerous phone calls from numerous people in the last couple of days on this, and I remember when we did, I was on the commission previously, we did Fairgrounds Road, and we had some some geotechnical issues in that area with soils and and had to do a change order on that road. Have we done any kind of investigation? You know, you might have a site that's worse geotechnically than what you have up on on college.
Yeah, Commissioner Rar, and thank you for that question. So we're just not at that stage at this current point. Before we can invest any more money in a geotechnical test, we we actually have to find the land first. We've already spent funding for the survey and for the appraisal, and that that would certainly be the next step. But as we all know, being Almagordians is regardless of where you build, we have to be extra vigilant, and you know, the closer to the mountain, the more secure you are and avoids the 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 whole element of the alluvial fan that's out there. So I I also have Chief of Capitol Alley and Facilities, Justin Burges. Would you like to add on to that, Mr. Burges?
Hi, good evening, Commission. So we we haven't done the geotech survey. And so without, you know, being an engineer, which is what we'd need to do, but we we can we can recognize that the site is fairly level and flat. And so our our best thinking is like like up at the Sunset Hills property, we had such a dramatic slope there that we ended up, you know, making a considerable investment into retainage and and controlling all of the runoff there. And and so what, you know, while there may be some need for that at the Hang Glider Park site, it's 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 fairly flat. And so what we would anticipate is is if there is a need for additional over excavation beyond what you would normally see for a a significant commercial building. We believe that the 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 savings from not needing so much retainage while to control slope would offset and mitigate those costs that would be developed.
And then one of my concerns from our discussion last week or the last meeting that the the commission had was was traffic. And I'd asked staff, you know, that we look at that because, you know, there's only there's only three ways in there. You have scenic, you have Florida, and you have Pecan. And I don't see anything in the agreement that, I don't know if our attorney or or if y'all's attorney drew up this agreement, but I don't see anything in there addressing that because more than likely, we're going to have to add stoplights probably at Pecan and at Florida and Indian Wells.
Commissioner Reardon, that's one of the themes I mentioned in the beginning of the meeting. It is, the schools agreed to conduct a traffic study and that if the signal is warranted at Fairgrounds and Pecan, they will bear the cost of that.
It's not in the agreement because we've been.
It is in the agreement. I can absolutely point you to it if you'd like to.
Where's it at?
Page. First paragraph on the page, it is one, two, three, four, five, six lines down. It says APS further agrees it will be responsible for the cost of a traffic signal at the intersection.
Okay.
Drive is part of its new facility construction cost if a traffic study reflects the need for a signaling.
Okay, I see. I didn't get that far into it. So and then one of my other questions, it says in here, we've got a cap of two hundred thousand dollars on. It if if I'm reading it correctly, it says the demolition and the ground sprinkler system and all of that stuff with a cap of two hundred thousand. Is that correct?
No, the two hundred thousand dollars is for extension of the irrigation system and for the for the sodding of the field of the of the green space. The building demolition, that's part of the, that's 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 schools' expense or the public, yeah, public schools' expense.
Brian, could you please repeat that last sentence?
So the the demolition of the school of Chaparral, that that is solely the 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 school's expense, the two hundred thousand dollars that's referred to in the agreement, that's what the system is putting forward after the building has been demolished and the site has been cleared for the extension of the of the system, the affluent lines and for the sodding of the of the area where Chaparral is taken down.
Thank you.
Is that mayor's last sentence?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you done, Josh?
No, I wasn't.
Well, you go ahead and finish.
Well, that that last sentence on there also, and and the the reason Superintendent Perry, I'm I'm concerned about this was due to your your success, you're the successor, the guy that was there before you. We've been down this road and and they made some promises that we did verbally. And then the city ended up selling out over half a million bucks for a stoplight that they were supposed to pay for. And and so I'm a little leery about it, but it it also says in here, two hundred thousand dollars, including applicable grocery receipts tax, but subject to the sufficiency of appropriations, which means basically if we have the money, I'm assuming is what this means, then we'll do it. So and and I understand where you guys are at, you know, is if if we can trade the land and you guys get it for relatively just a swap, then it it works better for all parties. But we need to protect the city side of this as well because, like I say, that last one over at it was at Washington and Indian Wells, it cost the city over half a million dollars and some other additional road improvements over there that we weren't anticipating to pay for. So.
Commissioner Baldwin, you had to comment?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Reardon, for those comments. Along those same lines, you know, one of my bigger concerns is, you know, if we do nothing, the city continues to maintain the park and doesn't have to worry about anything else. When we step down this road, we have costs coming in the future, some cost unforeseen. The maintenance of the Hang Glider Park and the maintenance of the new property seem to be probably about the same. But everything else does give me a little bit of concern. Not that I don't like the idea, but in reference to the actual agreement drawn up, our city manager mentioned that it does specifically include the seeding and or sodding, and I don't see that in here. Petra, can you help me find that?
It doesn't say seeding or sodding. It says an in-ground sprinkler system for a cost not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. That's the big ticket item on there and there's going to have to be, and Brian can talk more about the technical term for it, but there's it's going to have to be engineered as well, which has a cost to it. If we were to modify that language, add a period in and change that sentence, we can.
Well, in reference to what Josh said in in reference to our past agreements, that was one of the caveats that the commission handed down to the agreement. And it does say, I've read it twice, I was hoping you could point it out somewhere in there, but it does say specifically to hooking up to our affluent system, but it does not say prepping land and or seeding or sodding. So that gives me a little concern.
We, I'm sure that I can speak with their attorney and we can add in and will install piping for an in-ground sprinkler system sod and seed as well as sod and seed for a cost not to exceed. I do not believe that they are will be willing to remove subject to the sufficiency of appropriations. That's also in every contract that's written, because we will budget year to year and I can't ever speak for what the commission will or will not approve.
I'm glad Josh brought that up because that's kind of what happened last time. I have other comments, but I'll concede my time so we can move forward and hear from other participants. I'll wait till the end.
Do any other commissioners have? If not, I'll.
Actually, I've got one more thing. With the school board, have you guys consulted with the hospital? Because on on this location as well, just because of the fact of the of the where it's at and the expansions and stuff that are going on up there as well, I didn't, have you guys kind of talked with them and put them in the loop? Because one of my other fears is, you know, when I was on commission previously, the plan was to do a Fairgrounds Road extension out to the bypass. Okay, and then it gave you a ma- major thoroughfare that ran east and west that tied in with all of your north-south thoroughfares and gave you a direct shot to your hospital. And, you know, I I believe they use that road for for ambulances quite extensively. And that's one of my other concerns as well, you know, are we going to have ambulances crashing into school buses? You know, at certain times of the day. And and like I say, I'm not against the project. I I think it's a great project. But there's just some other things I think that we need to look at as a city before we agree to to do this kind of thing.
And what else for the comment?
I just have one quick one, real quick. I'm sorry. A question for Superintendent Perry. Did you at any time, I I know that you were trying to keep this sort of confidential initially, right? Until you spoke with the city until, did you at any time make this public to anybody or is this something you sort of kept inside the school until until you had a plan?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Payne. The answer to that question is it was absolutely held with the tightest confidence that this was an acquisition that that included making sure that we did this the right way. So executive, you know, during executive session, obviously, none of that information was released. And in fact, it wasn't, from what I'm aware of, is nobody really knew publicly what was happening until the agenda recently came out. So absolutely held with the tightest confidence.
Yeah, okay. All right. I have some concerns about that. I'll address those later. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I just have a quick comment, Mayor. Superintendent Perry, you just said that you held it in the strictest confidence until the agenda was come out. It wasn't known publicly. And I I I feel like I know differently. I believe that after our executive session, it all of a sudden became public. So not any fault of yours, but I I believe that the buzz started going around, the chatter started happening after our executive session. And I just want to remind everybody that executive sessions are supposed to be relatively confidential as well. So the fact that the information became public after the Almagordo City Commission's executive session was particularly bothersome to me, and I just thought I'd throw that on.
Yes, and if I could just interject, I I absolutely agree with that, and that's kind of where I was going, Mayor Pro Tem Sykes, is that I I believe it was Commissioner Baldwin had said in a prior meeting that we owe it to each other to keep each other intact. Do you remember that? And and so I think that it is important that we address that because I it absolutely, I'm a hundred percent confident that it's not true that it was not made public until after the agenda came out. I'm a thousand percent confident with that, and I am troubled by that. That's bothersome to me. So, yes, I agree with you. I think that we need to be very careful. If we can't have an executive session and have it stay an executive session, there's no point in having executive session. We might as well put everything out in the open all the time, personnel, whatever it is, contracts, whatever it is. So you're right, absolutely. And that's kind of where I was going with that. It's really troublesome to me. Thank you for bringing that up.
Well, I would also like to say that I I I believe that the information that I had heard, it was prior to the agenda going out. And then it was also speaking on all of the items that were presented in the executive session also. That's that's what I heard. So I was also concerned.
I was, Mayor Pro Tem Sykes, thank you for bringing that up. I echo everything everyone has said regarding that tonight. That should not have happened. Thank you for bringing that up. Very, very good. Any other comments?
I'm sorry that I had to bring it up.
If there's no other comments, then we'll move on to the public comment. And I and I would like to remind everyone, and I think the tort Hughes has reminded everyone that is speaking, that you do have three minutes tonight for your for your talk. And we'll start with Mr. Jim Hecker. Jim, good evening. Can you hear me, Jim?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
Great. Well, thank you for allowing me to address the group this evening. I'm a little bit chagrined that the hospital's finding out about this literally when you're ready to make a decision a few days ahead of time, when it's so critical to how we operate and the things we've done. So I'll cover seven points for your consideration because the bottom line is we look at this as being problematic to the hospital and to our patients in the community for the following reasons. You know, two thousand twelve, we extended Pecan Street and the Scenic Drive at the cost of two and a half million dollars to the hospital. And we did that for one reason, to increase ambulance access to the hospital, which now is in jeopardy. And we were in partnership at the time with the city, advancing your master plan and doing that. And then we eventually turned that over to you all. We think, I believe, Fairgrounds Road is considered an emergency traffic zone. And establishing a school zone within that would be ill-advised. This would impede ambulance traffic, passenger vehicles en route to Gerald Champion Emergency Room and the trucks from Fire Station Number Six that has been dispatched. But more importantly, you know, we've grown as a hospital. We have services now. We've always had the emergency room where minutes matter. Now we got a cath lab where minutes matter. And if there's anything disrupting that traffic any more than it already is, that's problematic to the safety of our community. The hospital also owns fifty-one acres immediately east of that property, which now, as we're talking changes in zones, make me concerned about our future plans of expanding for more services for the community that because there's a school there, they may change the zoning requirements. It brings in all kinds of things that worry us about that particular option. And then finally, you know, the flight flight path of the helicopter goes right over there. And hopefully, somebody's not going to come, you know, I, that's problematic in in us working through that. So there are just a number of issues that honestly concern us with where the school is proposed to be. I think the mention was it's once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I'm talking lives. And I think it will negatively impact our service to our community by diverting traffic and causing, who knows how that's going to work? Because a middle school, you're dropping off kids, you're getting caught in backups. How is that going to work with ambulances trying to get through there expeditiously? I'm just very concerned about it. And I'm disappointed that I got to throw rain on on this at the last minute because I don't, I mean, we all know that this, the school's a good thing, but just not where they're going to put it. If you're trading expediency for concerns of us being able to respond to take care of our community as we've designed it to be. And that's that's my comment.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Next, we have Mr. Ryan Sherwood. Ryan, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Can can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city commissioners and city manager. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of the Almagordo School Board and our community. As you've heard already, we have spent countless hours trying to solidify the best place to put the Chaparral Middle School after it was approved via the geo bond last year during the vote. Our constituents decided that it was in the best interest of our children and this community that we move forward in designing and building a state-of-the-art facility that will undoubtedly be the pride of Almagordo. It is up to us to see this phenomenal opportunity through to success. And one of the biggest keys to that success, as always, is location, location, location. And I know Mr. Hecker has, you know, some interest in that land also that may go back a while. And I'm not going to go into all the reasons that Mr. Perry talked about on why that that area is so good for us. We know it's expandable. We know it's a safe area. We know it's wide streets. We know it's, we need it to be farther away from Mountain View Middle School for the zoning. But but honestly, I'd like to see, like the hospital has expanded, I'd like to see the schools be able to expand and to grow and to go to another level that we just have not seen here. To be honest, the other properties we've looked at, you know, they were on scenic, they were on Indian Wells, they were downtown. I mean, these are all main thoroughfares. They're going to have some implications with traffic. So I don't know that that is as important as we as we may have heard. So from our perspective, during these times of just unbelievable stress and uncertainty, these are hard times, but the schools have have been here for this community. And during these hard times, it's hard to find the positives sometimes, but I can assure you that they're there. And this administration is committed to doing everything we can to improve our kids' education and really the community writ large. This is where I think the Almagordo School Board and the city commission have the very unique opportunity to collectively do something amazing and long-lasting for our citizens. God knows we need a win. And a forty million dollar new school on that property will absolutely do it. We cannot allow our civic responsibility as elected officials to be overshadowed by private interests, especially when a land swap like this simultaneously improves the holding of the city and of the Almagordo Public Schools, as they will both be benefactors of land that will improve the everyday lives of the people in this community. And ultimately, we believe that that's why we were elected. I urge you all to vote to approve this land swap and give this community a needed boost in pride that will last for generations to come.
I'm sorry, I was muted in time.
That's it. That was my last sentence. I appreciate it. God bless you all and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Do we have Angie Cadwalder with us this evening? Angie?
I'm here. Let me turn on my. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. We can't, we can't see you, but we can hear you.
All right, there I am now.
All right, there I am now.
We got you, we got you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. I'd like to talk to you this evening about the partnership that we have with the City of Alamo Gordo and how we've impacted the lives of the kids and at the start of the pandemic, we loaned out three thousand five hundred devices to our city's kids in order to do their online schooling. We've also put in several different hotspots around the community. So, and we've brought buses to different places so that the kids would be able to get on their laptops that they've borrowed and finish their schoolwork. I think that showed a lot of foresight from the administration that we had those three thousand five hundred laptops to loan out at the beginning of the pandemic. Also during the pandemic, we've had eight hundred plus employees that are citizens of Alamo Gordo that have been not without a paycheck. They're still continuing to get paid. And we have supported our community that way. They're the people who didn't lose their jobs during the pandemic are out there supporting all of our local businesses, our small businesses and are being members of the community of Alamo Gordo. Since the beginning of the pandemic in March, we have served oh, one million meals to Alamo Gordo children. So no child would be without a meal during this pandemic. We're also helping keep four hundred and fifty subs employed. We also have a mobile medical unit that goes around and helps with the people who need shots or doing COVID tests. And that's our health services where there's counselors available on the mobile health unit that can go give help to the kids if they're struggling being at home for however long they've had to be home during this pandemic. So we're not only supporting their educational needs, we're feeding them, we're supporting their emotional needs. The food truck has been around several different places where maybe kids parents work and they can't get out to go pick up their meals every day. So the food truck will drive to different areas in the community to provide those meals to kids who may not get a meal if, without that. So I would just like to say that I believe Alamo Gordo Public Schools and our administration have been very good partners and very good members of our community and we like to be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. GB Oliver, do we have GB out there?
Mayor? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
Hey, Mayor Boss, Mayor Protem Sykes, Commissioners, thank you for this time this evening. First of all, I want to congratulate the City of Alamo Gordo and the Alamo Gordo Public Schools. It, it's a rare occasion and I haven't seen it many times in my life. Of course, Mayor, you're a heck of a lot older than I am. But I haven't, I have not seen very many times when this community has come together the way this has come together. That thrills me to death to see that. Especially right now as we're facing COVID and the, and the small business are absolutely devastated. Really, all we've got, I think, is each other. And the fact that you all came together and put this agreement together. And it appears to me based on what I'm seeing that the taxpayers win from both perspectives in this. And so congratulations to all of you. You know, we learned something in the last two and a half years. And we learned it the hard way, and that is so goes public education in this community, so goes small business. And we learned, we learned some pretty tough lessons. And if you remember, if you'll think back about the bedding down of these F sixteen squadrons and they were, they were temporary. And, and in our conversations with General Goldfin, one of the great concerns in all of this was our public education. And when that began to straighten out, we began to get permanent bed downs on those, those three squadrons. So we know it's an important thing. We're really proud of what we're seeing in our public schools. We're really proud in the direction they're going. We understand something else too, and that is, and, and Mayor, you were out there the other day when we met with the Holloman leadership again, and they again stressed the importance of all this of, of education. So we, we've got to continue to strive for educational excellence, whether it be our children or the children of the men and women of Holloman Air Force Base or those in Otero County. So we're really excited about this project. I feel like that as we continue to improve education, we will see economic growth in this community. Before COVID hit, we were, we were dealing with twenty-two out of state companies at that time. Many of them aerospace companies, most of them looking to, to bid contracts on Holloman Air Force Base. I think this is an important step, and I think it's good for the morale in this community. I think that by putting this together, you immediately move it to an architect, a building coming out of the ground. And ladies and gentlemen, we need something good happening in this community and we need it in the worst way. Hey, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, GB.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dale Lindley, Dale. Before you start, I'd like to make a comment. I want to personally my condolences to your mom and dad. I've known them most of my adult life, as you very well know.
Yes, sir.
I know my, Kim and I both, we, we've had tears over that. And I want you to know that we're thinking of you and your family. And tell your dad.
Well, first, first of all, before my time starts, if I may, Susan, thank you for those words. Jason, she loved talking to you, brother. She, you know, she, she, she loved, she never met a, met a stranger. She loved to find out what was going on in your world and, 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 you know, the, the, the things she did, the, the things that people are telling us that, that she did that we didn't know is, is mind boggling. You know, she was, she was so giving and you know, like Richard, like you said, you've, you've known her a long time. GB, you've known her a long time. And, and it, it's, it, it's a shock. It's, it's hard. And, and, and we thank you for, for the words and the condolences very much. So thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. I, I come tonight as the old man from Chaparral Middle School. Thirty years and, and hopefully a few more. I, I, and Mr. Perry knows this, and by the way, I know for a fact that the schools did not let this out because if they were going to talk to anybody, I would think that Coach, Coach Perry and I would have talked about it. And so it, he kept it tight lipped to himself. I am heartbroken that, that the build will not be at the same site. But I am very excited about this new opportunity. Mr. Perry is, is a doer. He does what he says. He means what he says and, and he gets it done. I've been on the Parks and Rec Committee for, for many years. I am on the, I'm on the team that, that is helping to shape this new building. We have a great history and tradition at Chaparral Middle School. With all respect to, to Mr. Hecker, he's not from here. He doesn't understand the importance of our schools completely. He doesn't understand the neighborhood schools. He doesn't understand the importance of Chaparral. And, and personally, I feel that, that there are more important issues with the hospital that should be addressed rather than than, than, than this great opportunity to increase the value of that entire area of Alamo Gordo. Our kids deserve the best. In my heart, this feels like this is the best. The forgive me, my, my, my eyes are a little weepy right now. I, I just, I just feel that, that this is what needs to happen. It's a great place. There's a lot of opportunity to to, to make this a, a multi-generation school like Chaparral has been. And I think that, you know, all the concerns are valid and I think all the concerns can be worked through. And this is a great opportunity for Alamo Gordo. It's a great opportunity for Chaparral Middle School and the, the students that are there, the students that are going to be there, the, the neighborhood that, that is going to send their kids there. And I thank you for your time, your patience, your consideration, your condolences, your prayers. And I asked the commission if they would please vote up on, on, on this, on this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from any of the Commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Payne?
Yeah, I, I have just a couple of questions. Mr. Hecker, a question for you. I, I have heard this. Obviously, I've gotten phone calls about this too. And, and one of the concerns shared with me was your comment about the ambulances. Do you have any idea how many ambulances drive up and fair, up and down fairgrounds in a day? Do you have an estimate?
No, I don't, but that's the primary access. I mean, since we put that in, they primarily, the ambulances that do come, come up that road into the back of the hospital.
So you're saying they come up from White Sands, they'll come all the way up fairgrounds?
Yep.
They don't come down scenic? Okay.
Services today too, because I wasn't sure if they knew what was going on and, and they were, if you ask them, they would certainly say that's problematic.
I would have liked to have heard that from them. Because I'm right there on Indian Wells and I don't hear a lot of ambulances. So I was a little, kind of raised an eyebrow because I said, well, do we really get that many? And I'm not saying it's not a concern. I mean, if you say it's a concern, I have no reason to doubt you, but I'm just, I'm curious. And my thoughts were, somebody else had mentioned, I don't remember who, but my thoughts were the same thing. We have a school on Tenth Street, which is a primary thoroughfare. And I imagine ambulances go up there too. We have a school on Florida, North, North Florida, North Elementary School. I guess that's considered North Florida. I would assume ambulances go through there. First Street, we have one right off of First Street. So I'm assuming that maybe I'm wrong to assume this, but I would think it would be problematic wherever they decide to put the school. So I just, I just wanted to clarify that. I wanted to know if you had any statistics on that because
Well, with, with six days to figure this out, I haven't had time to really go into depth on that. But it, it's pretty straightforward that it would certainly compromise things. Anybody can see that. Putting a fifteen mile an hour speed limit in there, and it's a different place. I think the last time you did a traffic study was in two thousand twelve. That's before we, you know, just right when we opened up that side, we put all our employee parking on this side. There's a lot more traffic going down that road than what it used to be. And then if we add stoplights, it's, there's not stoplights on scenic. And so if you start adding stoplights and you get into that, so it becomes a much, you know, complexer thing as it evolves. And, you know, and my only thing is if it's your spouse or somebody coming in here, and when we want to get a person on the calf table in minutes, and I had even a minute to being able to get in the back of the hospital, that's not good. And so you all should know what you're sacrificing. I hear all, all the talk. And there's no question, this is the easiest answer for them, but it's the wrong answer for the community.
Yeah, and I, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I'm a little uncomfortable with the suggestion that our decision is a matter of life or death. And I, I hear you. I do understand. And I took this very seriously. I did a lot of research. Anybody will tell you. I asked a lot of questions. But I think to suggest that, that if we don't, if we do this, that you know, the life of somebody is on our shoulders is, I think that's a, a bit much. Fairgrounds was not always there, and so something different happened before that. And I, I would question whether timing is different for that. But that's, that's just my personal.
Can I add just a little bit? I, I get you on that. And, and who's to say? But we know this, with all the remodeling we've been doing and investing in this community, the primary access to that ED is being built with Fairgrounds Road in mind. Not scenic, not Indian Wells. And so this has been in the works for a long time. And, and so could it happen? You and I both know, you just never know. And my job is to try to mitigate things that we think would compromise patient care. And I think I should express that if I feel that way, and I sincerely do.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I, I, I absolutely appreciate that. My, my other question is, you mentioned you only had six days. And as you heard me say earlier, I'm sure you heard me say there that I, I suspect that perhaps the day after executive session, maybe just a couple of days later, but I would think that the after executive session, this information was out. So are you, are you telling me that you only found out six days ago? Or when it was put on the agenda or whenever it was that, that?
That's when I found out about it.
Hmm, okay, okay. All right. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other?
I've got one more. In that, the agreement in that same paragraph we've been talking about where the stoplights and stuff are, it also, and this is probably more of a Brian question, but it, it states in there that, that the city acknowledges and agrees that we'll be responsible for any cost to extend non-potable water to this location as well. Do we have any idea what that would cost us? Or if we already have non-potable water, I think we already do, but
Already, it's already on site. Commissioner Riordan, you're talking about the Chaparral site, correct?
No, it says in here that the city acknowledges it, let's see, at the part of the new facility construction and traffic studies, the city acknowledges and agrees it will be responsible for the cost, if any, of extending non-potable water distribution lines to the boundaries of the AP SD site for landscaping and athletic field irrigation and a signal light at Fairgrounds Road and Florida Avenue.
Yeah, the affluent, the reuse water is already on site at, at Hang Glider Park. That's what we use to, to water Hang Glider Park.
Okay. So what's that we'll have to extend it up to college? Or is it saying that we'll have to?
No, Commissioner Riordan, it just says to the boundary of the site. So if it's not there, this has to go to the boundary of the site. It does, it's just the boundary to, it just needs to be extended there. It is actually past the boundary already. So we're actually past that.
The, the, the new site or the old site? The Chaparral site or our site on Fairground?
No, that's, no, no. The new site. Where it's already there. So we won't be extending anything because the potable, non-potable water is to that whole field already. The, the, the issue with that is that, and this was, I mean, this was written by an attorney in Albuquerque who hasn't been privy to the multiple executive sessions that we've had and that the schools have had or the contract negotiations back and forth. So that just says that we will make sure there's non-potable water to the boundary of Hang Glider Park, which we know there's potable water to Hang Glider Park.
Non-potable water.
I'm sorry, non-potable water. I'm sorry.
And then Brian, one other quick question, you know, I'm just brainstorming here because of the area and, and, you know, all of y'all are aware of my concerns of the traffic up there to begin with, when we talked about this. But the, the La Placita building that we have over there on Florida Avenue, how many acres do we have there in that area?
On the La Placita site, that's
Yeah, where we have that and then
You're the fifteen acre, the minimum, if I remember correctly, and Jared or Justin can correct me if I'm wrong, the schools had a need of at least fifteen acres. That is nowhere near that size.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Size off the top of my head, but it's nowhere near fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I believe Commissioner Baldwin wanted to say something. And after Commissioner Baldwin, I would like to make a comment.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem Sykes and Mr. Mayor. Josh asked one of my questions. But Jim had brought up a point in reference to zoning requirements. I'm wondering if our city manager can reference that. He said he had plans. They own property there. It could potentially change zoning. And after he answers that, I have a couple of comments.
So I have no idea what the hospital has planned for the property that they already own. With the, with the school going in, possibly potentially going in on, on the Hang Glider Park site. So right now, the City of Alamo Gordo in Griggs Field, we've already licensed So right now, the City of Almagordo in Griggs Field, we've already licensed through alcohol, or what was alcohol and gaming. I forget what they call themselves now. The, the portion of the ball field with pup fish play or for alcohol. We're grandfathered in, the school is coming after the city already had that, had that area designated and approved. Now, if the hospital in the future, and again, I don't know, I have no idea what they have planned, how soon we would be looking to cross Fairgrounds Road to the property. Now, if they were going to go in and put a, a convention center that was going to sell alcohol, obviously, they would be too close to the, to the schools. I just, I, I don't, I'm not saying that that's what they're planning on doing. If you're talking medical facilities and whatnot, I don't know if it was in the group, just because of schools and the area that would stop a cath lab, whatever medical procedure that would, having a school there would, would prevent that from being built.
Okay, thank you for those comments. My last couple of things were, initially, my biggest concern was, what are the legacy costs to Almagordo to be, excuse me, to Almagordo? What will they be as we proceed forward, tying things and streetlights? Again, if we don't do anything in reference to this land swap, we're not incurring any new costs. As we move forward, there's always the chance that we will. And with what we're dealing with, with all of our budget cuts recently, and of course, COVID not going away anytime soon, those are my biggest concerns, but that doesn't supersede. And I thank G B for making these comments. What we all bought into is a commission. Two, three years ago, when the chamber realigned and they formed Mangate, we bought into what was going to make this community the best it could possibly be. And it was outlined quite specifically that schools, medical care, you know, housing, safety, recreation, you know, these are the criteria in which our community is being judged by these other contracts, schools being number one. And I think the, the change in the school board and all the good people that work on it, the, the entrance of Mr. Perry to the equation showed that the community's interests were really lied in making sure that our schools became the best they possibly could. Since I became aware of this, since our executive session, after receiving phone calls, after it was on the agenda, I realized that there's other options on the table. Mr. Heckert has always done an amazing job at the hospital and advanced what the hospitals needed for this community in a way that we haven't seen in a long time. But if I had to kind of boil it down to a deciding factor for me at this point, schools were always number one on people's lists. They were the most needing in the community, and they've been moving in the right direction since we went down this road. So, you know, it's a, it's a very difficult decision to make with all the things in play, but I would say that I, I really do like this idea. I think as we move forward, the hospital, under the leadership of Mr. Heckert, is going to be able to deal with the situation at hand, as he always does so well. And lastly, I'll say, if for some reason we're at an impasse tonight and we cannot move forward, I have total faith in both, excuse me, all three parties, the city, the hospital, and the school system to come up with a plan that will still allow this to move forward. Egress and ingress to these, to the school in reference to the, the ambulances, everything, you know, the concerns of having them so close. We know other communities have them close together as well. They seem to manage just fine. I think these are all things that we can work through, and hopefully we can move forward with this. So thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me the comments.
Mayor Pro Tim.
I, first thing I want to say is, Jason, I think great minds think alike. You just pretty much voiced everything I want to say. But I'd like to start out by extending my condolences to Dale Lindley and his wife, Tina. Coincidentally, every time I would walk into C Senor to eat, I would run into them. Every time I would go to Pizza Patio, I would run into Louise and Dr. Lindley, who, oh, by the way, probably knows more about me than anybody at Almagordo, with the exception of my husband. Anyway, I, my sincere condolences, when I heard, Dale, that your mom had passed, it, it affected me greatly. So prayers are with you. Also want to thank G B Oliver for his comments tonight, and I want to compliment Jason. Remember pre-COVID when you were Mayor Pro Tim? And one evening, you, you said to us as a commission, everybody sitting on the dais, that although we get excellent information from the staff, we get the agenda, we get the agenda books, we have a lot of things that we can look into prior to a commission meeting, that you keep the door open for information once we get to a meeting. I'm paraphrasing here, but once we're in a meeting and we have the opportunity to hear people from the community, the experts, our colleagues, talk about an issue, as long as we maintain an open mind, it's so easy to learn new things about the issue. And we can never discount what the hospital does for this community. Rural health and a regional hospital are so extremely important. But as Mr. Oliver brought out three years ago, and you brought this out, too, Jason, three years ago, when we did the shift from Committee of 50 to Mangate, and we got the F in our, our, the grade for the public high school, the emphasis became education. And I, I believe that the idea is sound. And I, like you, Jason, if for some reason we can't go forward, I've got the confidence in all three entities as well that we'll be able to do something very positive. So thank you, everybody, for all of your comments. It's been very enlightening.
Anybody else have a comment? Do I hear a motion regarding this?
Give me one sec, Mr. Mayor. I lost my agenda.
Yeah, that's my problem.
Where is it? Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we proceed with item number seven.
Motion to proceed with item number seven, which is to consider and act upon the land exchange agreement between the Almagordo Public Schools and City of Almagordo. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Move the second, I'm sorry.
Commissioner McDonald.
And a second from Commissioner McDonald. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, nay?
Mayor, I'm going to vote no on that one.
Okay, I'm presuming it's six, one. Am I correct? Six, six ayes and one nay. Okay, in that case, motion passes, six, one.
Thank you, everybody, for your comments and your time this evening. There was a lot of great information.
Yes, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have one other item. We'll move on to appointments to boards and committees. I have, we have the, some of the openings that we have before I go to an appointment. Airport zoning board, we have one city vacancy, the vacancy is due to the expired term of David Ford. Cemetery board, we have two city, our county vacancies. There's no applications have been received for either of those. Housing Authority Advisory Board, there's a one-year vacancy and one three-year vacancy. Following individual is interested in being appointed to the three-year vacancy, that being Thomas Rogers. I hope I'm saying that right, probably not. If appointed, if appointed, this will be his first term. I have reviewed his application for this board and find him very qualified for it. And if there is no objection from the commission, I'm going to appoint him to the Housing Authority Board. I have no, then I, Mr. Rogers is, is appointed to that board. If there's no further business for the good of the city, I would, I would, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Baldwin.
No, it's okay. Just to recap, great comments from everybody. Thank you. That was very informational. And by the way, since Patria won last time for the best backdrop, has nobody seen my, my fireplace?
Hey, I got you, Blick, at my.
Oh, yours is way better, Jason. I wish I had one like that. Please tell me you drew that yourself.
Of course.
It's like Dusty's got Sasquatch back there, right?
This was a tough one, guys, and I think, you know, I think we have, we will.
That was a tough one.
It really was. Very, very tough.
My, my decision on that is, is not because I'm against the project, I just think that we need, you know, two more weeks, wouldn't kill them and, and do a little research on the traffic. So, you know, like I say, Jason was there, and I believe Nadia was there on the last decision with the school system, and we took a beating on that. Says that they didn't keep, and that's my big.
You're right. You're right, Josh. Be prepared. The city is going to incur a cost on this somehow, somewhere.
We are. I bet we're in it for a half a million or a million bucks.
Are we?
I have confidence in both Patria and Brian, and I think they can handle that.
Well, we get in those positions, though, when we get stuck. You know, it was when we went to Washington, the Washington First Street. They came to us and say, hey, guys, we don't have the money. And it was either don't extend the road so that they had access to the school. We were, we were stuck.
The major, with that one, we never did get anything in writing. You know, so.
Yes. So I will see, we'll see what happens, see if we get burned on this one.
If there's no further business for the good of the city, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
That we adjourn.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy canceled Thanksgiving.
No.
Happy small, quiet Thanksgivings.
Hold up a minute. Mr. Wright made a motion. Who was the second?
Everybody.
Everybody. I'll second it.
Who said, okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Riordan.
Seconded.
And we, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes seven, zero. Any nays? I don't think there's a nay to it.
I would like to continue this meeting forever. Thank you for all the time keeping. Rachel, thank you for the public comment.
Yes, thank you.